Thank you, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Fairbowl Public School School Board, the special meeting for March 8, 2021, due to Dr. Roby Shaw and Mr. Wolf unable to be here present. They are on virtual and was agreed upon that to run the meeting might be better to be in person. So that's why I'm subbing here this evening. So with that, Ms. Tredway, if you would determine if we have a quorum present, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have seven members present.
Thank you. At this time, would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For this, we will now move to item four, which is approval of the agenda. I will entertain a... Okay, is that good? I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Olson, a second by Ms. Tredway for approval of the agenda. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we'll move into number five, the community comment. We do have a some community, some community members who did email in and their comments, so I will read these tonight. And with that, I'm going to take off the mask. So hopefully, I can be understood a little better. One of the first letters we did receive was from Mr. Rob Carlson and to acknowledge that Mr. Carlson is in support of the ALC. And the majority of his comments are questions. So instead of reading the question saying, what I'm going to do with this is I'm going to ask Superintendent Sesker and staff to address those questions and reply to Mr. Carlson with that. And thank you for sending this in, Mr. Carlson. Second public comment is from Mr. Joe Dragich, and it reads as follows: Dear Fairbowl Public School Board Members, It was 26 years ago that I began my teaching career at the FALC. At that point in time, the day school was at Town Square and night school was in the math rooms at the senior high school. As it was true 26 years ago, the 20 years I taught at the FALC, and I'm sure exist today, the primary reason that the FALC existed was because of a feeling of disenfranchisement that exists in the Fairbowl High School towards these students. Of course, our students did not use big words to describe their feelings of not feeling welcome, not being a good fit, teachers not caring or attempting to understand their entire life situation, peers who are mean and cruel, and their individuality being discouraged and sometimes punished. These behaviors and actions are going to happen as the number of students grow in the high school and grow in the high school and more and more students are placed in the classroom. This is reality. It continues to exist today. It will continue to exist in the future. To promote the total student, the FALC Director, Mr. Jeff Selberg, along with the members of his staff, agreed that our students need separation from the cause of their problems and development of their own community as well identity. That goal could only be accomplished by having a having a separate FALC location. Teachers are very territorial about their rooms, and I'm sure that John Bellingham heard a few stories/frustrations from Jeff and I about this period of time. But we eventually got our home at the old district office. I believe that move was the single largest factor in the successful education of alternative students in Fairbowl. The FALC staff and students are very resilient when they see that they have a chance at success. That building was magic to our students, learning, self-worth, responsibility, empathy, and development of happy, productive citizens. So if you know what the root of the problem, I'm sorry, so if you know what the root problem is for the FALC student, and you know what has been successful, why would you put them back in the building that caused that problem? Maybe we can put them back into some high school classrooms that are not so desirable, or better yet, let's put them in with some high school teachers who really don't want those students in their class. Of course, we could really make the FALC students feel welcome by bouncing them between buildings. Maybe because the belief exists that these students have little or no chance of success, why bother considering what's what's in their best interest because it's financially inefficient or inconvenient? Do the right thing. Sincerely, Joe Dragich. Next correspondence we received was from Mr. Tom Revland. His topic is ALC move to the high school. My credentials to address this topic: Teacher, Fairbowl Alternative Evening School slash ALC 1993/2015 and current FECGED classroom instructor. Brainstorming my experiences and what I learned from working with ALC students, I developed this essential ALC program must-have list. ALC students need their own building. ALC students need their own space. ALC students need guidance to rediscover their desire to learn. This is an approach/reapproach teaching technique. Patience is required. ALC students need to know that they can succeed in school. For many students, this takes time to re-instill. ALC students need an alternative school because, from their perspective, the school they are leaving is not working for them. ALC students need opportunities to be leaders. ALC students need to be listened to. ALC students need to learn to voice their opinions in a respectful manner. All of these essentials have been embedded in the ALC for decades. What is the opportunity cost of changing this now? One of the reasons that why I teach GED classes is because I feel the education system has part ownership in the fact that my GED students did not graduate from high school. My students realize their faults, but the educational system had faults too. The age range of my students this year is 17 to 60. Point: The problem is decades old. Why change the ALC program when it helps students graduate from high school? Sincerely, Tom Revland, FECGED instructor. The third correspondence is from Angie Lynch. Dear Fairbowl Public School Board Members, Administration, and Community, I first want to recognize and thank each of you for serving as a school board member. I know this is often a thankless duty that involves making decisions that are not always easy and almost never please every and almost never please everyone. I also want to express my gratitude to each of you that voted to make more time to decide what is best for the Fairbowl Area Learning Center. Your efforts are very much appreciated. During the last board meeting, Superintendent Sesker made a comment that the majority of the letters, phone calls, emails he received were asking for the FALC to remain in the same geographical location. I want to clarify this point because I think I may be partially responsible for the misunderstanding. I created a template letter to get the conversation started for people wishing to express themselves regarding the move to the FALC to the high school, and I ended it with making the proposed changes will have a detrimental effect on our community, and I am asking you to please do the right thing here and leave the FALC as it is. I understand how this might seem like like I was asking for the FALC to stay right where it is. However, that was not my intent. When I said leave the FALC as it is, I meant that the FALC should remain a separate entity from the high school, and I believe that most people feel the same as I do. So I want to be sure the point is understood. I recognize the need to move the FALC from the building it is currently in, but a move to the high school is not the best choice. Is the long-term plan, if the long-term plan includes having and supporting an ALC within the community, moving to the high school is counterproductive. If the long-term plan is to close the FALC, then it is the right move to get there. As a teacher at a neighboring community's ALC, I know firsthand the importance of what having an ALC means for students, for the district to keep the high school and ALC separate. Oftentimes, students coming to an ALC have a negative experience with staff, students, or both, within the high school setting. I strongly feel that bringing the FALC program to the high school is not the right choice for these students. The point of an ALC is to meet students where they are, not to not judge them based on their past, and to give them a clean slate and fresh start moving forward with support from their teachers and staff. This cannot happen if students enrolled at the FALC are simply using a different entrance to the same building. Students will struggle to shake their reputation, feel safe with staff, and find their place within the ALC community and success as a student. Moving forward with this decision will cause enrollment at the FALC to drop even further along with graduation rates. Over the next four years, there will be many students that have fallen behind, are homeless, are experiencing a mental health crisis, et cetera, due to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. The FALC will become even more even a more important piece of the puzzle within the district to meet the needs of these students. Having a strong ALC community will be the key to keeping these students within the district. If you want to support these students in earning a diploma while preventing them from open enrolling to other nearby ALCs, I urge you to keep the FALC a separate entity from the high school. Students will not see the FALC in the same way if it is moved to the high school. It needs to separate to maintain the school culture and atmosphere of an of an ALC. I am asking you to spend the money why the money necessary to keep the FALC separate from the high school. These students need this. Our community need this. With kindness, Angie Lynch. Another correspondence we had was from Dan Piper, an FALC graduate. Here is a statement I would like to make on behalf of a Facebook group called We Are the FALC, written with the help from the many testimonials that ALC students and parents shared within the group this last month. I wouldn't have graduated without the ALC, a statement that we heard so many times these last few weeks. It is clear that the FALC means so mu- so much to many in our community. But what is exactly about the ALC that makes it so different from other schools? Community. When you ask the current or former ALC students what their experience was like at the FALC, you will oftentimes hear things like, "It was the first school where I felt like like I belonged," or that, "It feels like a big family." There is a special community-like atmosphere at the FALC, and it is hard to describe until you walk through those doors yourself. Culture. Many ALC students talk about the unique culture at the FALC. There is a mutual respect between students and teachers at the FALC, and it is due to the FALC being structured differently than the high school. It is a young adult program where students are treated as such. FALC students call their teachers by their first names. They don't need to ask permission before leaving the classroom. They have a strict attendance policy and know the expectations are to come to class ready to be a student. A new beginning. For many FALC students, it is the sense of having a fresh start at a new school that is so important. Some students feel alienated or experience conflicts with other high school students or teachers. Others might be struggling academically and need that clean slate at a new school to turn their academic career around. Individualized learning. The smaller school setting is a source of comfort for many ALC students. The smaller class sizes allow teachers to connect with students and work on relationship building. It is because of this that the ALC students feel like the teachers truly care about them. Individualized learning is a hallmark of the ALC, and the teachers know how to meet the students where they are at socially, emotionally, and academically. FALC students have flexibility in their schedules and are able to attend school while also attending to other life obligations such as parenting, work, medical, mental health issues, family situations, financial issues, the list goes on. The high school, by its nature of being large and traditional, simply cannot provide the environment necessary for ALC students to be successful. The ability of the FALC to continue offering its highly effective program for at-risk students will be nearly impossible to accomplish if they are forced to share a space with the high school students and teachers. This will put undue strain on all involved and put a proven program and its students at risk for failure. Thank you for allowing this critical decision more time and consideration. We are hopeful that you will find a solution that is truly in the best interest of FALC students. Sincerely, Dan Piper, FALC graduate. The last piece of correspondence is from Mr. Dennis Piper. Dear Fairbowl School Board Members, We are Dennis and Kathy Piper, both born and raised in Fairbowl. We have four children, two have graduated from Fairbowl High School, Fairbowl Senior High School, and two who graduated from the Fairbowl ALC program. We have history with working with at-risk kids and vulnerable adults. We were the directors of the Rice County Buckeye Manor Group Home for juvenile boys and girls. We were the owners of Piper's Good Things Foster Home for Seniors, and we are still the owners of Ivy Senior Ivy Hill Senior Care Incorporated, which is located in the former Parker Cole Funeral Home by Central Park. The issue that we are concerned about is the suggested move and cutting of staff of the current ALC program. Our experience with Fairbowl Senior High School mainstream program, for the most part, was positive. Three of our four children definitely had issues with some teachers at Fairbowl Senior High School. I personally wasn't, I personally was involved with these issues, trying to resolve them with their counselor's help and personal meetings with their respective teachers. One resulted in having our daughter switched to a different teacher's class, and two resulted in us pulling our son and daughter out of Fairbowl Senior High School. We homeschooled our daughter for two years and then sent her to ALC, and our son went to an alternative school in Dundas, Minnesota, and then finished at ALC. I can tell you for a fact, there are teachers that there are teachers that do not or cannot deal with students who require different teaching skills than what is offered through the mainstream system. Those teachers existed back when our children attended Fairbowl Senior High School, and I'm sure they still exist in today's teaching systems. Another fact I can give you is that my daughter did decide to take additional classes at Fairbowl Senior High School while attending ALC. My son on the other, on the other hand, I'm sorry, my son on the other hand, if it was required to take other classes, would have said, "No way," and left ALC. If that would have happened, I know he would never be in the position he is today. I remember asking one of Dan's teachers, a class where he had 18 points out of 300 and 300 and something, when she would consider that my son might be having a problem in her class. Her response was, "I don't babysit your son." Dan graduated from the Fairbowl ALC program, went on to Dunwoody to become an electrician, graduated with honors, got married. He and his wife have two great sons. Dan passed his state test to become a licensed journeyman electrician, and they just purchased the Piper Homestead Farm last year. Educated, successful, tax-paying family, still located in Rice County. Thanks to the ALC program that offered something different than the mainstream method and had staffing that wanted to teach students that required more. Then there's our daughter, Mackenzie. She never wanted to stand out in front of her classmates, so she wouldn't ask for help. She saw how other students were being made an example of when they asked for help. This was not, this was not her. I would say both Dan and Mackenzie were alike in that regard. Mackenzie graduated Fairbowl ALC program, went on to St. Paul Technical College to become an American Sign Language interpreter, graduated, got married, is the director in part owner of Ivy Senior Ivy Hill Senior Care Incorporated. Just last year, Mackenzie and her wife purchased our home and got the Piper Good Tidings business they both that they both currently run. Educated, successful, tax-paying family, still located in Rice County, thanks to the Fairbowl ALC program. ALC understands at-risk kids. ALC has the staff that understands and wants to teach those students. ALC does not represent the mainstream model. That's the number one reason that most ALC programs are not located in the mainstream high school buildings. Don't break something that works. ALC was removed from the high school for a reason. Find an alternative that will better their environment. Look at how you encourage at-risk kids to attend a school that is theirs. As school board members, you are mandated to provide the best options you can for every student, not second best, and definitely not to go backwards. I would encourage you to table this issue until you find the best alternative you can for the ALC students. Respectfully submitted, Dennis Piper. Going to want to thank everyone who submitted reading here for public comment. And I believe that concludes our public comment at this time. So now we will move to item six, which is the ALC discussion. So to begin, I think I'm going to ask Mr. Sesker if he would like to open and give some information.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And the board and the public have received all those documents online, and our staff is out here ready to answer any questions that you might have of any of those types. So if you have a question on any of those documents, just ask them, and they'll come right on forward and and then answer those questions for you. So feel free to ask them.
So board members, do any of you have any questions on the memorandum provided by And I think we should make this clear as well that this has been on board book and our, so the public has had access to these pieces of information, et cetera. So it's all transparent here, what all the information that we're reading and have here as well. So seeing nothing with that, let's go on to the next one. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Denzie on her memorandum? Okay, moving on. Does any board member have any questions on the ALC for Mr. Adams on the ALC cross-subsidy summary?
I wouldn't mind just a walkthrough, maybe of this document.
Yeah, so maybe Andrew and Nicole, you guys can come up and just in case you have questions with Nicole too. Or may this would be, is Ann Marie here too? That could be, maybe Ann Marie on this one, Nicole, for the extended time?
I don't need a detailed overview, but we have had a lot of questions about finances, and maybe we could just have a sort of a brief or high, you know, high-level overview of the questions that have come up and what these documents show.
Sure. Excuse me. So the documents that we prepared for you were to were in attempts to answer all of those questions for you. I know we've received a lot of questions of, how's it generated, where's it going to, and what's it covering? So this first document was to give you a brief overview of the revenue and expenditure generated and expended on the ALC, and then the revenue and expenditure generated and expended on on the extended time. So summer steam extended time programming. Okay, so you can see that between the four pieces there. And you can see that we're projecting for the end of the year to deficit spend on the ALC just shy of $500,000. So that's our first page. The second page was just a breakdown. We received some questions on exactly where the money was going within the building. So we broke it down by line item for you guys there as to where the budgeted expenditure was going.
And just if you have questions, just slow down, just slow down.
Yeah, please, please slow me down if you have questions.
I do have a question.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, absolutely, cool.
One. Your asterisk that indicates the district has 150,000 permissive levy.
Yes.
That is assigned to extended time. Do those figures that we see reflect the $150,000 in there?
No.
And then are these the entirety of programs that are coded to ALC? 081, 082, 086?
Correct.
Or are there others that also are coded to ALC?
081, 2, and 86, yep.
So aren't, where do we find, like, middle-school ALC and some of those? Because aren't those a different coded number, then? It seems as though if we're going to look at the total cost of ALC, we should include all program components, so we can look at all program components and see where the spending variance is. So I appreciate having this, but I'm not certain it provides the entire picture.
So are you asking, do we, do you want to see the ALC expenditure at the middle school and the ALC revenue at the middle school?
Well, I've been told that there are other codes, 085, 072, 071, and 081, that, oh, and 081 we do have, but my understanding is that all of those are part of ALC slash targeted services. So I guess I would feel more comfortable knowing what the entirety of expenditures for ALS, any programs under ALC, generate by revenue and expend in costs. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, sort of. There's different categoricals that the ALC is located in, so you can do a general, is that 08, is, what's the general total of all ALC programs, Andrew? What's the finance code?
To my knowledge, it's the 990 for this, for this budget.
That's what you have in there?
Correct.
So that is the grand total of all the ALC programs?
Correct.
Regardless of which categorical they go into on the, on the course code?
Correct.
Correct.
So there's a bunch of different finance codes, but there's, is it one course code?
There, there's, it's not a course code, it's program and a FIN code.
There's sixteen of them, so, program and the FIN code. So the program code is ALC.
What, what are you saying, what, what are you saying?
No.
It's the UFAR.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll help you out there.
It's school finance, yeah. We're, we're talking UFARs, which is a significant number of digits, but what Todd was trying to say is that it's the FIN code, so there's a FIN code 303, which is ALC-specific. Any program code or cost, I'm sorry, any cost that goes above and beyond the revenue generated by the ADM that is allocated to that 303 FIN code is then charged back to the general fund at a 000 FIN code, which means just general unreserved revenue expenditure.
So where, to be specific?
Yep.
Where would we find, for instance, cost of middle-school ALC teacher and program in this projection?
What would be the FIN code for that?
It's the same.
What, what is it, though? What's the?
303.
303, it'd be within 303.
So is it reflected, I guess my question is, is it reflected in this cost analysis?
It should be reflected in the 081 and the 082 line.
So in essence, there are some expenditures that we perceive as ALC that is located in the north part of town that may not be directly associated with the high school ALC program.
The, the total program ALC, there's a bunch of different program codes?
Right.
But they all funnel into one finance code?
Right.
And is that, I think that's the bucket.
I get that, except when I look at ALC, just the, the title, ALC, I assume it's the program that Vanna oversees. But in essence, I also know from history in the district that we have a middle-school.
Steam, yep.
Well, no, we have a daytime ALC instructor.
Yep, yep, at the elementary, yep.
I don't know if there's para or whatever. I also know there are some other programs that may be attached to that. So my question is, is this inclusive of, for instance, that?
It should be, yep, because it all falls under the same finance code.
Yep, and I've just pulled up the report, and it matches exactly what Andy's.
And I'm not questioning whether the report is inaccurate, I'm just saying that when all of us look at ALC.
Yep.
We envision the one in the north part of town.
Oh, I see, so you're, okay, got it.
Yep, I got you.
And what, what I'm saying is, there is more involved
Yes.
in this ALC revenue and expenditure.
Yep.
More than
Just the one up in the north town.
what we are referring to as the FALC.
And the majority of programming is all at the north end of town. The middle school is a small component within that larger set, and then the targeted services is that extended time. So that is separated. But Rob, what did you?
Page, page two goes line by line in each of the positions, and all of those positions are positions that are housed in the ALC building on the north side of town, and total that $1,084,000 that is then brought up to the first page.
Yep.
So those expenses are from the ALC building.
Yep. Okay, that's. So, yeah, I just ran last year's expenditure guideline, and everything's in there, and the middle school is just a small little blip within that ALC part.
Is that reflected on page two, then, somewhere?
I'm not, I'm in a different.
You're asking about Jody Swenson, correct? Yeah, Jody Swenson is coded to that 303 as well.
So she is reflected in this green graph as well?
As a part of the overall cost of the program, yes.
She's asking about this.
Oh, you don't have the names next to each one, so I can't tell you half in.
I don't.
No, I just, I just wanted to know if there were other program components other than the north.
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry to refer to it as the north-end program.
That's right. Yeah, so the programs we have are the one on, the ALC in the north end, the middle school ALC, and, and we also had the elementary ALCs for a while, do those still have, no?
That, that's the extended time.
That's the extended time, no.
So that's on that separate line in the expenditures and revenues.
Yep, and that, yeah, that crosses over. So the targeted services go where?
Extended time.
That's the extended time.
Yep.
So that's page three, where you can see how the revenue is generated.
Yep.
So Ms. Tredway, did you get your question?
I, I think so. So then, summer school, middle school, summer school, and after-school program and all of that goes into extended time?
Yep.
The, yes. The summer school at the high school, the Vanna? Where does that go?
Middle school.
Oh, middle school, yeah, that's extended time. Yep, I'm sorry, I thought you meant credit recovery at the high school.
Good. So back, Ms. Cavallari.
Yes, thank you.
Did you, did you get your question answered?
I appreciate it.
Okay. Any further questions on the cross-subsidy for Mr. Adams or Dr. Leland? Okay, how about then we move on to, I keep forgetting. So, Mr. Wolf, Mr. Robisho, Dr. Robisho, or are you, any questions or anything?
I do not feel like.
I'm good at this time as well, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the budget adjustment proposal, then, that was provided for us. Board members, anyone have any questions about that? I'm seeing or hearing none, okay, so.
Well, why don't we just, can we highlight the changes that are in this document from the last time we looked at it?
Yep, and, Ann Marie, if you're okay, having Nicole come up for that one, that'd be great.
Of course.
Do you have that in front of you, Nicole?
Oh, I don't.
Okay.
We've already worked through and voted on some of these items, but there are a few changes.
So what we have put together in front of you, or what we have put together for you is the approved changes from our last board meeting, and then at the bottom, we have provided the items for which you had tabled and asked to come back and review, and then what we also tried to do for you was provide the similar breakdowns as far as what the goal is, the difference, what were permanent cuts, what were one-time cuts in each.
And you want to just go over, it might be just clear, for clarity, option A and option B, Nicole, on the bottom there?
Yes, absolutely. So option A is about three-quarters of the way down for the total FY22 budget adjustment. So this includes adding in the coordinator at the area learning center, and then you will see underneath there the new subtotal, along with the permanent cuts and the one-time cuts, and then there's also an option B, which would include a coordinator, two teaching positions, and one custodian. So essentially, option B would be an option to, with the assumption that the ALC would be moving to the high school.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me okay? This is Chad.
Mr. Wolf, certainly. May, go ahead.
Superintendent Sesker and, and Mr. Adams, for you regarding this, if we do not approve option A, it would be additional $135,000 and change, and if we don't approve option B, it would be an additional 329. If I combine those together of roughly 135 and roughly 330, would that mean that we would miss our targeted number of 2.2 by roughly $465,000, or am I wrong on that? What I'm trying to do there is add the option A and the option B together, but I'm not certain I'm doing it correctly.
Do you want to try it, or do you want me to?
No.
I have to look at mine.
No, yeah, sorry. So, Mr. Wolf, as it stands, we've approved cuts of 1.9 million, so we are 278,000 short of the goal. So if we approved both options, we would be beyond our goal, if that's what you're asking.
So let me.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you, that's what I was asking, just in reference to, yeah, yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
But option B includes option A, right?
No, they're two separate options. No, you're right.
She's trying to say it accordingly.
A piece of A, yes.
We're interpreting it two different ways.
So, please clarify that one more time for me.
So essentially, for Chad's purposes, if we approved option B, which includes the coordinator, we would be over our goal by $51,000.
Okay, and if, and if we just went with A?
If we just went with A, we would be short of our goal by $142,000.
Right, thank you. Ms. Tredway.
This is present in either option, but how are Esser funds of $775,000 going to be allocated? Do, do we know that? I've forgotten.
We sort of do. So we're going to use that, we can supplant a lot of those dollars to help, so we don't have to make more cuts, basically. So we'll go in and, based on the criteria, offset salaries within the system, and, up to whatever, the 700 and some thousand dollars. Yep, and then additionally, we want to use, I think we talked about a million dollars in the summer for summer school for catching kids up, and then also another million dollars in the fall from the, from the current Esser 2.0 program, if I'm saying that right, to help with class size reductions, and that could help with some of the cuts that we made the, at the last board meeting with some of our elementary staff.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
So just to reiterate, we didn't make 1.9 million dollars in cuts, we made 1.2 million dollars in cuts, or just, just short, under that, and we're going to use 775,000 of Esser funds to offset other expenses that protect us from making 775,000 more cuts.
Correct.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, this is Jerry Robisho, and I can understand how confusing it can be to try and figure out what's going on when you're doing this remotely, but doing a great job. I have a question, is option B totally contingent upon the ALC moving to the high school? So the coordinator and the teacher, is that an ALC teacher or teachers?
Yes.
And then the custodian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one follow-up question, if I can.
Go ahead, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. Superintendent Sesker, I know this is a bit of a forward-thinking question, but as we discuss Esser 2.0 and based on what appears to be like legislation that is likely to take place out in Washington, is it your assumption that we'll be seeing some form of a Esser 3.0 or whatever they're going to call it? I'm not certain.
I am, and I think it's going to be a significant dollar amount, which also is something new that kind of plays into this whole formula for today, too, but that is correct.
I'm, I'm sorry, it was hard, I apologize, it was hard for me to hear you. You, you believe there will be some form of a Esser solid 3.0 or no?
I do, I do believe that there's going to be more money coming from the federal government based on the 1.9 trillion-dollar package that was just passed by the Senate. I'm positive it's going to get through the House and through the President's signature, and that money will funnel in a pretty good chunk of money back to our school district, yes.
At this time, we don't know the dollar amount, but it's likely to, to be at least a fair amount of money.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a good amount of money, that we haven't even thought of how we're going to reallocate that and for that stuff.
And, and obviously, we don't have it yet, and obviously, we don't know the parameters that we can or can't use it, and we don't know the timeframe, but I appreciate the answers, thank you.
Any other board members have any questions? Ms. Steves, Mr. Olson? So then I believe we're on to the.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Ms. Tredway.
Could you please explain the difference between permit cuts and one-time cuts, and what positions those may be?
So the permanent cuts are those cuts we are making that will be cut from the budget, and they won't pop up again next year, whereas the one-times will have to address again.
Okay.
And if I could just put a little carrot, a caveat out there, yeah, sorry, I can't, this is really a hard one to hear. Nicole, and I, the whole cabinet's been visiting, too, the, the potential of reallocating now after those cuts, those permanent cuts have been made, is to reallocate funds from the Esser dollars to help hire back some of those, those positions.
Because as long as we have funding, I believe we need to make a commitment to reasonable class size. Is that, is that also a long?
Oh, very much so, yeah, yeah, yep.
I agree. So our understanding is that a good chunk of the Esser 3.0 money, am I, are we calling it the right thing?
I don't, I, let's call it Esser 2.0 right now, that's the one.
Okay, and we've talked about it already in this group, is to provide for opportunities for students to catch up and keep up after a difficult year.
Mm-hmm, okay, yep.
And class size is one way, we can help with that. Not, it's won't be the only thing we look at doing, but.
Correct, yep, yep, and we can do a lot of the class size with Esser 2.0, and so now when Esser 3.0 comes, we'll have to reevaluate that as well.
Okay, so let's move on to the last one, the fiscal year '22 fund balance projection summary. Any questions on that slide that was presented to us?
Mr. Chair, this is Chad once again. Can I just, I, I believe Andrew is still probably up at the table, as I apologize, as I'm looking at this document, and I'm not looking at the camera. Mr. Adams, can you just briefly walk us through the, the line where there's one asterisk and the line where there's two asterisks, and then what that means by years below, briefly?
Sure. All right, so the one asterisk is our projected fund balance for FY22, based on the assumption of the 2.1 million in cuts that was proposed. So below, we have the projected '22, '23, '24, and '25. the projected '22, '23, '24, and '25 models. So, the, for '22, looking at a 6.642673 unassigned fund balance, or 12.35%, and then projected fund balance for FY22, if we made no adjustments, looking at about 5 million, or 9.05%. And the caveat there being that our fund balance policy does say we need to be at 9.5% or greater. I think what Mr. Wolf also wanted me to touch on was just the quick look at '23, '24, and '25, the out-years, that we're still looking at $2 million in cuts a year going forward. And, and again, that's assuming no revenue increases from the state. It was in a meeting today that sounded positive for getting revenue increases from the state, but again, until action takes place, your guess is as good as mine.
Thank you for that. Board members, any questions, any other questions?
Are they talking about no increase from the state? Are they talking about no increase from the state?
In this projection, we're assuming no increase from the state. The state is pushing for increases, though, at the, at the capital right now.
Because the state, is that at deficit or surplus?
That, we're at a, the last projection in February is $1.6 billion surplus.
Surplus.
Yep.
Any further questions on any of these documents?
I did-
Ms. Treadway.
I did ask for some information today, if, if option A was an option, or considered, what the-
Fun balance.
Unassigned fund balance would be?
Yeah, the fund balance would be. And I think everybody probably received that information. If not, it's in an email. So, thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
Anything further, board members? Thank you all for presenting, for doing a very, an excellent job of giving us this information, which is, school finance is tough, and I don't proclaim to do it, no way. So, it was in a form which I understood and could work through it with the help of a couple other people to get, to get this. I'm not going to acknowledge anything different, so thank you very, very much. Well done. Okay. So with that, board members, let's move on to item 6B, consider proposal to reduce the ALC director. So, Mr. Sesker?
Yeah, so, sorry. So, last board meeting, you asked me to come back with a, a suggestion on where we could look at an administrative cut of about $125,000, and so this is the suggestion that I am making.
You're up, when you push that, Courtney, you're off.
I don't know how everyone else feels, but I would like to know our information and decision on 6C and 6D before I vote on 6B. I'm not sure how everyone else feels.
Well, and as, as Chair, I believe we approved the agenda, and I, we're going to go through the agenda as, as proposed there, so.
Okay.
Sorry. Misinformation, so.
Sorry, I didn't think to bring it up earlier.
Nope. So with, with that, does anyone else have anything else, questions or discussion? Mr. Sesker, Ms. Treadway?
If we reduce the ALC director, do we have a plan for administrative oversight?
We do, yep, yep. It'll be up to Jamie and his team to create a, an oversight plan for the district for next year.
And technically, Mr. Bente is the administrator-
Yep, that's correct.
Over that program.
Yep.
When did that switch?
Uh, two years ago, two years ago.
And why is that?
Uh, we just felt that the, the relationship between the high school and the ALC was, it just made sense to have that, so that he would be part of the supervisory, it just was, we thought it was pretty much common sense to have that person there, since those are high school kids that we're overseeing. Plus, he went through three directors in the last 10 years, too.
Isn't that just moving the accuracy?
No, no.
Mr. Robichaux?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I need a clarification, if I may, please. We're taking action on the proposed reducing the ALC director, and we just talked about budget adjustments. And in there was a reduction of the, a position for the ALC director, which was under option B. And I guess I, if, if we take an action on this, and by chance it passes, are we not then going back into the other agenda item about the budget adjustments, and what that might mean?
Mr. Robichaux, I'll let Mr. Sesker and Andrew answer that, but my understanding is A and B are totally separate, and that B does not include the reduction, or B does include the reduction of the ALC director as well. So we could just do A standalone, or, or, and then the decision of C and D, C or D, I think is separate from this, from this agenda, but I'll let Todd and him, I hope you didn't explain it right.
Yeah, so the 6B, are you asking, Jerry, is 6B contingent on 6C and 6D, or are you asking about the memorandum from above?
No, I'm not asking about the memorandum. I understand what Mr. Bente has indicated. My confusion is, if we act on this, are we not then in fact going to option B, minus the teacher and the custodian that we just talked about, under budget adjustments?
No, not necessarily. So the only thing this is, is this is just a reduction of an administrator, and that's it. And that would be part of the entire budget adjustment. It doesn't have a connection between option A and option B. Option A and option B were just examples to show you what the fund balance would be if we made those reductions. That's all that was. Okay?
Thank you, that, that helps.
Yep.
Appreciate that very much.
So we're just doing something legally?
Pardon me?
That this is something we have to do?
Yeah, yeah, you would have to make this, that is exactly right.
This is a vote we have to make it.
Yep.
Yes.
You got it.
You're quite correct.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wolf?
I totally understand where Ms. Cavalier was coming from, in terms of determining this position, if we want to leave it or, or reduce it based on what item 6C and D are. And, but we'll, we've also approved the agenda, so with that said, I, I just want to let you know that I will not be supporting the elimination of this position, as it sounds like we should be expecting further, what I'm going to quote, unquote, Esser $3 from the, the latest COVID. And if, if, if we do leave the ALC at its current position, item 6C, I would hope that, or it's my belief that a director is likely needed there if that program is going to grow, or if we're going to look at ever changing it. And I also believe that, should it end up moving to the high school, that it's important, as it's a very important transition piece. And so my belief would be to leave this position for one year to help better understand what's going to happen. We've heard from a lot of community members, and, and Mr. Bellingham, earlier tonight, you read several letters from former graduates, or, or related to former graduates and whatnot. So my, I believe, or my vote will end up being that this position stays for at least one year to help us educate and determine a better plan moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. So again, the letter B is consider proposal to reduce the ALC director. Ms. Treadway?
As difficult as it is to determine to cut any position, we are cutting 12 teachers. And I believe that we have a responsibility to look at how do we share the load of cuts? And I believe that the high school administrative team has the capacity and skill set to meld the two programs in a more seamless way. So I am strongly in favor of, of creating, well, of, of making an administrative cut.
Okay, so with that, we can continue our discussion if we would have a motion.
Also-
Mr. Olson?
It was a direction that, for Todd to find cuts of 125,000. So if you don't cut this, then what else is on the table?
You're correct, this is the recommendation he came with, yes.
Yeah, so this, we don't, we vote to keep the ALC director, then Todd's, right? He's obligated to find 125,000?
This is the recommend, my understanding, this is the recommendation he came back with for the board-
Right.
-to approve or not approve.
But if this is, if we don't cut this director, then he has to find something else to cut?
I don't-
Possibly not. This is the recommendation that the cabinet and he has come forward with to-
No, I don't think you understand what I'm saying, is that, this is, is, am I explaining it right, Todd?
Yeah, I think what you're saying is that the boards, the board made a motion in a second, and voted on giving, having me, directing me to find $125,000 of administrative cuts. So the question would be, if the board doesn't approve this tonight, do I have to go back with my team to find another 125,000?
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
That's all.
Yep. I guess we'll deal with that if the motion, if, with this motion or not, I guess, so.
No.
So would anyone care to propose a motion?
Some moved.
So, Mr. Olson, you are moving to-
Could you restate?
Which option?
What's your motion?
Uh, exactly, to reduce the ALC.
Your motion is to approve the reduction-
The recommendation to reduce the ALC director.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, board members. And again, as we're discussing this, let's keep it, keep the discussion pertinent and germane to the motion. Discussion.
Well, I have to agree with Mr. Wolf. I am actually continue to be perplexed at how we could be talking about reducing the ALC director, when we either are going to ask the ALC to make a very significant change by moving to the high school, or we're going to keep the ALC at its current location, knowing significant changes are coming, including a likely move to a different location a year from now, and the likelihood that we're going to be considering the same proposal a year from now, when we're looking to make another $2 million in cuts. So for me, especially knowing that there's additional funding that we may be able to, be able to repurpose to offset some of the cuts we're making, I just don't think it makes sense to cut the ALC director. I will be voting no.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalier. Further discussion? Mr. Olson?
Yeah, with this funding from the government, that's one time. It just, we have to be careful how we use it. Because they're not going to keep on doing this year, well, who knows what they'll do, but, you know, every year, they vote billions of dollars. I don't think that we can afford it as a nation. But who knows what will come after this? 3.0? I'll name it that, I guess. But we have to be careful that we spend it, then all of a sudden, there is no more money coming after 3.0. Then where are we going to cut? We spent the money.
Other board members? Ms. Steves, anything? Comment? Ms. Treadway?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wolf?
This is Chad. And I, just in response to Mr. Olson's comments, Mr. Olson, my thoughts are not in disagreement with what you're saying. My thoughts are just simply to have this position be there for one additional year, so that we could make sure we have the best plan in place for the ALC. And I think it's important that we have a director in that position to help bridge that gap of, is there a potential move in the future, or is there a oath in that program, or how do we best utilize that program? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robichaux, anything?
Considering I'm 1,700 miles away, I could probably speak very freely, and I'd have to worry about somebody attacking me after the board meeting. Anyway, as somebody who brought up this recommendation at the last board meeting, I hear what Mr. Wolf is talking about, and also Ms. Cavalier, from the standpoint of a one-year grace period, and the fact that there has to be some shared sacrifice when it comes to budget reductions. And as I evaluate, or relook at and reevaluate what the budget cuts are, I would say that what you've listed as operational savings of $135,000, really, in my opinion, may constitute an administrative cut. It's not a position, I understand that, but it does cause the administration to operate in a more efficient manner. So, if I take a look at this, if we do not cut the administrative position of 135, we will be at $1,922,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
So we would be short a little bit of our goal of 200, or 200, or $2,200,000, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Board members, also, just, my thoughts here is, one, I do believe, and in conversations with Mr. Sesker, that coming forth of this, with this recommendation, he has gone to cabinet and to ALC teachers down there, and has discussed this with them. You know, proposal things, has, everything's right out in the open, as to how it will evolve, and the program will continue, et cetera. So this recommendation, in lieu of, in lieu of what Mr. Robichaux has said as well, I think it's, it's a recommendation they came up with, and we should strongly consider that. Is there any further discussion, second, next to last call?
I am a high school administrator by profession, and I find it, I think this is a very difficult task, that we're going to ask the high school team, who's based in another building, to possibly oversee a team of people in another building, a team of students in another building, who either will or will not be moving to the high school. And if they move to the high school, maybe unhappy about it, and need tons of support and guidance to ensure that that program is really strong. And if they aren't moving to the high school, they're going to need a lot of support as we work through what's going to happen a year from now. We need our strong team in place at the high school, just like we need a strong team in place at the ALC. And I, I know it'd be very difficult for me to have to take on directing a program that I don't currently oversee, because we cut a full-time position, so.
I have to agree with Ms. Cavalier. I think, not that I don't have full confidence in the leadership team at the high school, I think that, that the program as a whole will suffer if that position is not, is cut.
Anything further before we vote? Hearing none. Ms. Treadway, will you do a roll call, please?
Certainly. John Bellingham?
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier?
Nay.
Richard Olson?
Yes.
Jerry Robichaux?
Yes.
Cassie Steves?
Nay.
Caroline Treadway?
Aye.
Chad Wolf?
No.
The motion passes four to three.
Thank you. Next, let's move on to 6C, and C and D. And I'm going to ask Mr. Sesker, just to comment just a little bit about these once again, and the possibility of-
Yep.
-future funding, and if you would go from there, please.
Yeah, and certainly the federal allocation, or the soon-to-be allocation for those federal funds is going to play an impact. We actually think that it might make sense to hold off on the ALC for a year. And take a look at it to examine what happens. I know that when I talked to a couple of you, we talked about how this COVID has created a really unique year for us. And maybe it goes back to normal, things change, who knows? But maybe things don't change either, but at least it gives us another year to evaluate to see where we are with the ALC. I can tell you right now that moving forward, you cannot function on a program that's going to be deficit spending 400,000 a year. You got to figure something out. And what that is, I think if we, if we give another year to take a look at that. We can take a look at what those, those issues are. Whether it's enrollment or whether it's too overstaffed or, or whether it's location, whatever it might be, we can take a look at it. But I'll, I'll be really frank with you. It's a great education program. There's no doubt about it, but at some point, you have to determine whether or not three or four kids in a classroom. Makes financial sense to, to have an ALC operating on its own independently. When you're going to have to take those funds out of somewhere else. So I would suggest, and you guys can talk about that a little bit, but at this point, I think it makes the most sense to. Because we're getting some more money from the feds, to use that money to allocate. At least evaluate where the ALC is for, for the next year.
Thank you, Mr. Sesker. So, board members, with, in hearing that and, and after. Reading the many emails and letters and talking with community members, et cetera. I'm going to. I'm going to move. That we postpone indefinitely. Items C and D. To postpone indefinitely items C and D. Do I have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. And now I will address my motion. In postponing, to postpone indefinitely means that the board. It was postponed indefinitely until the board decides to discuss it again, if ever. That's according to Robert's rules. So if we come back. Let's see, March, if we come back in November or December with information, the cabinet administration. Mr. Sesker makes the recommendation, we need to do so, we need to start talking about this, whatever. We, we can bring that up, but otherwise we are going to postpone this indefinitely, and I think that gives us some time to see if this next. I don't know, a bunch or batch of money comes in from the federal government. And to analyze deeply the moves, et cetera, our financial situation, which, you know, it said it has to be addressed here. And give a little more thought as Mr. Sesker said. Further discussion? Mr. Olson?
You.
Mr. Olson?
Okay, also that we're hoping the population will increase at the ALC. Based on student count, right?
Yeah, we're hoping that some of the open enrollment will come back to us and we're not losing more open enrollment for that.
So we could get some of the students from Norfield coming back, maybe?
Yeah, it's, I think that those are all options.
Especially they know, nope, the word gets out pretty fast that they're going to.
Yep.
And so they say, okay, they were afraid of maybe something happening, but the word will get out pretty fast, the next day or so. I would imagine. That. Okay, but we're looking at trying to get back to what? 100 students?
Yeah, that's around 100 students about what it'll help.
Is that?
Yep.
A good amount?
Yep.
That'll make it financially feasible?
Yep, just be careful because you don't want to necessarily shift all the high school kids to the ALC or vice versa, because now you're not gaining any revenue.
No, right. We don't gain anything, but.
We want to attract students from other districts.
Yep.
But, excuse me, Mr. Robisho, did you have something?
I think Mr. Wolf has his hand up and I can respond after him, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you. Just for clarification purposes.
Excuse me, Ted, Ted, just.
Does pass, it will be clearly communicated to staff, to students, to students' parents, that this will not be on the agenda to be cut for the 2021, 2022 year, correct? Or, or I should say not necessarily cut, but, but moved. It would stay in its current form for the 2021, 2022 year, correct?
Ask, ask that again, Mr. Wolf. I'm, I didn't catch that.
Okay, so my apologies. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so if your motion passes. It will be clearly communicated to students, to staff, to students' parents in the community that. No changes to the location would take place for the 2021, 2022 school year and my, my. The reason I ask that is, when you say indefinitely, the last thing we want are, is confusion that we would potentially do something. During the upcoming year or anything like that. This would essentially table this until we bring it back and it, and it would. Continue to exist in its current format at its current location for the upcoming school year.
Yes, that's my understanding, and the motion to postpone indefinitely is that the board, it's indefinite, it's. Off to the side until the board decides to discuss it again. If it never chooses to discuss it again, it's moot. Ms. Tredway?
Mr. Chair, I certainly recognize your, your motion. And understand it. One of the things, I'm, I'm not amending your motion, but if for clarification. That during that indefinite period of time, that there be a process set up. To really take a look at what the ALC is, what it should be, and how it should be delivered. I think to have it just as it is. For example, there's no way that ALC should continue to not have EL services. And I think that's something that should be looked at, so. I would greatly appreciate your, 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 your motion. But I think there needs to be some very clear understanding that they have to take a look at what kind of program it's going to be in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Robisho. First, the motion to postpone indefinitely is not amendable. There, I just wanted to point that out. Second, I think from what you have noted here, I believe that's what will be worked on. It's noted in the minutes now that it will be worked on, those things to have EL services, et cetera, things that you said already with that. The motion is simply to take these two items, to keep ALC its current location as been proposed. Or to move it to the high school as proposed, to postpone that indefinitely. And I'm just, I'm saying until more research is done. Or financial things, just these things to put it all together, after listening to the, these things, I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you very much for that clarification, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Tredway?
Well, I have to thank. Mr. Sesker and the cabinet for thinking outside the box. For the variety of ways that we could address programs that would. Allow for some budget cuts. My issue for all of them have been, how do we take the time and make thoughtful, deliberate decisions? And so I believe this motion allows for that. Whether it's. We make it a different determination at the same time next year or not. One year of being able to really do a deep dive and consider. How we want any program to look, I think would be highly beneficial.
Thank you, Ms. Tredway. Mr. Olson?
Did you put a time limit on this or just indefinite?
The motion was to postpone it indefinitely. And we can discuss, until the board decides to discuss it again, if ever.
So if we just start discussing it in November, that sort of stops that indefinite?
That's correct.
And then, then we can decide something. November of this year, they're saying we might move that over here, right? But that indefinite, that stops it, right? If we bring it up as a board agenda, that stops that.
Yep, right. If I wanted to put a, a date on it, I would have put postpone definitely until November, October, but I didn't want to take and mandate that. Being indefinitely, I think gives, gives the cabinet and, and Mr. Sesker some more flexibility in, in doing the research.
So indefinite until we bring it up in his agenda.
Indefinitely, that's, that's correct. That's the motion.
So postponing indefinitely doesn't hinder Mr. Sesker and the cabinet continuing to study these options?
Correct, and I, if I could just make one more point of clarity, Mr. Chair, is that what this means is that. The staff will stay at the ALC. There won't be any other staff cut at the ALC. I think it's important that staff who are listening out there understand that. That those two positions will not be cut.
Excellent clarification. Thank you. Mr. Olson?
So we're given the administration, I mean, now they have to really study this? I mean, starting now?
They'll be on, yes.
They'll be on it. That, let's not wait. I mean, right now, are we sort of setting the clock but not really?
If I could just make a little clarity, I just need to know.
Clarification of, you know, let's not wait, let's.
Can, can we, we gotta wait till the motion approves? Then after the motion, I promise you, we're going to start right away.
Okay. Okay.
Will you stay here for the rest of the meeting, please?
And, and to clarify that, I do believe that there has been done, there's been a lot of work done with these proposals at this time. I, I want to thank everyone who worked on those, et cetera. It just, it's coming so fast and with the reaction from the community, things that, and with the. Maybe future money coming in, I think this is the right thing to do. So, any further?
Is there a second to your motion? Has there been a second?
Yes, there has.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Third and last call for discussion. Seeing none. Ms. Tredway, will you do a roll call, please?
John Bellingham?
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jerry Robisho?
Aye.
Cassie Steves?
Aye.
Carolyn Tredway, aye. Chad Wolf?
Aye.
The motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, board members. So, Mr. Sesker, anything you want to clarify on, you're starting now, et cetera, or it's.
No, we'll.
I know you have.
Yeah, we'll start studying it.
Yeah, I know. So with that, board members, we are completed with that, so we're number seven, the adjournment, so do I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. We have a second by Ms. Cavalier. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we are adjourned. We'll take a five-minute recess here before we go into our work session. Thank you, board members. Well done.
Yep.
So I will call the work session for March 8th here in to order. And item number three, the pledge allegiance, since we already did that at our special meeting, we won't do that. Item four, informational items, we have none. Item five, committee and department, committee and department reports, student representative report. And we'll, so we'll start off with five B, the district advisory committee. Ms. Corcoran, your report, please. Welcome. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I am excited to share our progress from, actually, last Thursday's district advisory committee, so. Just as a reminder, in January, we merged our community advisory team with our district advisory team to really align the goals of world's best workforce. As well as cradle to career. And so what has come is a really exciting hour meeting, once a month. In which we have community and educators at the table, really working to develop plans. To really support our community and our students. And so on Thursday, we took the five action teams that are subcommittees of this larger team. And they worked on two tasks. So the Ready for K and Read Well by Third Grade team worked together to really talk about. A community-wide reading initiative. So how can we partner with our businesses? How can we partner with our library system? How can we partner? how can we partner as a school district and really take a full community approach to why reading is so important? So I've already had feedback from Alina Health, and we're doing some partnering to get books into the hands of students during their Well Child visits, expanding that beyond what United Way already does. So, that committee is already hard at work, and Carolyn, you might be able to add more to that as well, because she does sit in that committee, which is, it's, I mean, again, it's very fun to have that grassroots and have our community members and our educators working together. The other three teams, we have a middle school team, a middle school math team, a high school graduation team, as well as a college and career readiness team. And those three teams worked together in our Thursday meeting to start discussing what is a profile of a Faribault graduate. And so, that brainstorming session really touched on so many of those employability skills, those life skills, the things that we're hearing, you know, communication, collaboration, problem solving, being flexible, right? I think that, if we've learned anything this year, flexibility is key. And so that, that team was able to really generate that list, and their next steps are really taking action to see, how do we make that come to life? So not necessarily focus solely on academic standards, as a school district, we know that's our obligation, but what are some of the other components that we can pull into play so we make sure that we're creating next, the next generation of Faribault employees? And so, that's where we're at right now with those two teams, well, those five teams, working collaboratively on those two goals right now, to really put it into action at the community level, as well as put that into operation within our school system. So, Mr. Chair, I'll open it for questions.
I think that's excellent, because I know when we were working on the levy for the seventh period day and asking the chamber and other businesses, what, when, when our students graduate from Faribault High School, what skills do they need, what looking for, so I think, and this is exactly, so thank you. It's a, it's a good, it's a good thing.
Thank you.
It appears that Becky Ford with Faribault Youth Investment is taking a major role in this. Is that, I mean, what would you say the structure looks like?
Yep, so right now, we're actually working on designing our leadership team. So Becky has taken on that role to recruit our cabinet, if for lack of a better word, but that primary leadership team that will be representative of both community and business, but serve more in that oversight. And so that's where she's taken on that leadership role for us, to make sure that this is a community-wide initiative and community-wide support, and not just the school district alone. And then we also have a data team, and so that would be, in addition to Becky, Anne Marie, and myself, we also have Zach Pruitt joining us in that, and Joe Sage as well. And so we are doing a lot of the data digs. Right now, we have a dashboard showing us some of the, some of the data points for each of the action teams. And then we have the advisory team that is made up of those five action teams. So the leadership team, again, we kind of started that grassroots, and then as we've evolved, we've identified that need for the leadership team to be able to guide our work and to also be able to celebrate and share our work. And I should also share, Jerry and Courtney are also serving on that committee too, so it's nice to have representation.
Thank you, I enjoy sitting on it with you.
Any questions, Mr. Wolf, Mr. Robichaux?
No, none for me.
Any else?
We really appreciate all you're doing, thank you.
Absolutely.
So next, we will go to the, let's see, technology, no report, insurance committee, no report. Our wellness committee, Dr. Leland.
Oh, she left.
Okay. I saw Snack Nation there, and that just grabbed everybody's attention.
She did a Snack Nation move.
There she comes running, I knew she was. Amory, you're late, you're late.
Snack Nation. Okay, so, for wellness, we've had some really fun things, I'm so sorry, I was talking to somebody. So, for wellness, we've had the opportunity this year to do something really special for the buildings, now that people are getting back to sort of normal. But we've been working with a company that used to be called Snack Nation, super cool name, now called Carew. And Casey, Cassie, Cassie's been a part of this conversation. So we've been delivering healthy snacks to all of the buildings through this organization. So it's been very cool, people have really appreciated it, we've gotten some good feedback. The other thing about wellness is we are offsetting the cost of the maple syrup run. We've done this every year with the Riverbend Nature Center. So really, those are the only two wellness things. Cassie joined us last time, she realizes how much fun that group is. Yeah, so those are the couple of things. I think the other piece that we really want to start delving into more is policy review. The wellness policy is several years out of date, and when we revised it, we really beefed it up with a bunch of information about mental health and wellness, and even hydration for students. We really, we really spent a lot of time on that, so we're gonna want to do that going forward again. So thank you for joining us last time.
That might be a good time to bring that policy back to our new policy committee too, Amory. It'd be good for us to review that.
Absolutely, yeah, would that be the process? Would you want to review it first?
No, I think that you guys can review it and then bring it back to us, and we can take a look at it.
Super. So that's it for wellness. Thank you.
Questions, any, anyone?
One question, it's been many years, but we don't invent machines soda pop.
Right, those are off during the day, so we can't have any of those vending machines on during the day.
So they're still in our schools?
Yeah, I believe so.
And that they are?
Yes. They are.
But they are there for weekend activities?
Yes, yes.
Right.
For tournaments and those kinds of things.
Oh, okay, not-
But they're off during the day.
Okay, not, okay.
Yeah, thanks for that question.
Anything else? Okay, Dr. Leland, do you want to jump into then the community education, the year-end review?
Yes, and that's not this one. Because what I did, and this is something that Chad Wolf inspired me to do. So instead of, Chad had, a couple of board meetings ago, had asked about all of the different grant opportunities that have been brought into the district, and said, oh, I'd love to see a report on what, you know, what the impact has been with all of the grant funds. Instead of writing up a report, because I love to write, you know, right, Courtney? You understand? She's, she's in her doctoral program, so she knows. I love to write, but instead, we did an Animoto video of just kind of a year-end review. So, I'm gonna play this for you, I think Drew, he's gonna play it for us. Just three minutes, three minutes.
Hey, Amory, sorry to your time.
Oh, thanks.
Is there any with the, Mr. Wolf, John I, and Misty, and Matt, that we can see this as well? Can you share the screen or no?
Yeah, no. No, but we can send you the link.
Thank you, sorry to your-
That's okay.
Mr. Robichaux and I have popcorn, we just don't have the movie, so sorry.
Oh, Matt Steichen's gonna send it, thank you, Matt.
This is the time of the movie we're not kicking down.
Dr. Robichaux!
Normal movies.
Oh, normal movies. Oh, that's fine, that's the best part. I like getting laughter out of Nicole. So there's, hopefully Chad, he'll get to see that, if not now, but sometime soon. That was just a way of demonstrating the impact that community education and all of the partners have throughout the district and the community, and just one thing, I never want to take AdSis away from Rob. Rob is the AdSis person, and he has continued to be able to get several hundreds of thousands of dollars in the door to provide some really critical services for our students. So, but we do invest, community education invests deeply into the ninth grade academy with our offset for Joe Sage's salary. So, I don't know, it's weird to see photos with people without wearing masks. But, you know, some of those photos were taken before COVID, so, yeah, with that, that's it for community ed.
Could I ask, I'm interested in the Grow Your Own program.
Oh, sure.
Because I've worked quite a bit throughout the state at one point, just trying to get funding for that one and two. But, so, how are, with COVID things, how are kids still interested in the Grow Your Own?
Yeah.
Because that's a very valuable program, if we can get kids to go into the teaching profession and come back and stay in Faribault or in here, that's huge, so how does that work?
Yeah, and Mr. Sesker can also comment on this, since it is a partnership with the eight Minnesota Education Partnership districts that we have, and MSUM Mankato. But the way in which we're able to serve students is online, so they're still taking the course online. All of the districts are either offering the Intro to Education course, which is the gateway to all of the different educational career pathway opportunities and classes. So, we're engaging them online. We've, we're either offering it directly, or like Faribault is through Kaylee Weens, partnering with a couple of districts, La Sure Henderson and Centennial.
Was, and Wasika, right?
Wasika is partnering, now you're like quizzing me. Wasika's partnering with someone else, but yes, essentially, Kaylee is helping to deliver programming not to just our students, but to other students, and helping the teachers in those districts get skills to deliver that class. So this is like a multi-layer approach. Owatonna is offering the Critical Race Theory class, in addition to the Intro to Education course. And it's really interesting, the data coming out of that course, because the majority of students that signed up for the Critical Race Theory are students of color. Did they transfer into the Introduction to Education? Not necessarily. So, it's really interesting to, maybe we need to look at kind of rebranding the titles of these, of these classes, and yeah, so it's just been a really fantastic opportunity. We're hoping that the, the grant comes available again, and that we could apply for a partnership grant again. But yeah, it's been fantastic. Superintendent's meet about it every month.
Yeah, and other things too, not just that, but that's, Amory's been instrumental in getting that grant rolling. She is the grant writer for that grant for all eight school districts, so thank you, Amory, for that. We also give college credits, maybe you picked that up as Amory was talking about that, but kids can get college credits as a result of taking those courses as well, and continue to, to look at expanding those. I would also say that, sorry, I'm gonna take this, this one doesn't breathe as well.
Yeah.
The, we do our own Grow Your Own, we've been doing that for now a number of years. Jerry, I'm giving Jerry a lot of credit, and of course, Amory deserves 100% of the, a lot of the credit that, through this whole community education program, but from where we were when I first got here, compared to where community ed, education is now with, with Jerry's leadership, there's just no comparison. And, and Amory has done a great job, and all our staff have done a great job of doing that. But this is one product of, of many products that have come out of, of community education. The other one is STEAM, and summer STEAM, we had to skip it last year because of the, because of the pandemic. But we are creating teachers in our summer STEAM program. And we're also creating administrators in our summer STEAM program. I know that Gina up at Divine Mercy was an interim administrator for us. We've had a lot of great people come through that program to get their experience, both as a teacher, as a paraprofessional. And we've seen a lot of these kids go on to, to college. I know that, well, there's been a lot of kids that come from our school, we try to recruit from our local school district. But we also get, get kids from Northfield and, and other surrounding areas that come in those programs, so. So it's not just that program for this, there's, it's an expanded program in Faribault.
That's, that's true, STEAM, STEAM has been our own Grow Your Own, it's amazing. Joe Timmer, and, so Joe Timmer is one of our teachers at the high school, and Valerie Henry is a math teacher at the high school. So, they've, Valerie has been with our program for many years, and she continues to do administrative internships with us during STEAM. So she's now in a master's program through MSUM Moorhead. That's where I did my program.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Robichaux?
Jerry Robichaux. Matt sent us the link for those that are disc of learning, and so we're able to follow along, and thank you, Matt, for that. And I'm sorry, I missed probably a little introduction. Dr. Leland, is this gonna be put on the web so that the community can see it, or is it already on the web?
It's already on the web. That's the brilliance of our team here, is we all have our own parts, and Matt's able to, Matt actually made the video, he worked with the IT team to put it on the website, he put it on social media, yeah. So it's out there.
It really represents what community ed is all about, so thank you, appreciate that very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I'm curious, I think I saw 150 pre-K checks, like, must be developmental check ops that are done.
Oh, yeah.
Is that a precursor to every child being admitted to kindergarten anymore?
Yeah, yes. School readiness. Yep, not school readiness, screening, thank you, yes, I have to get my-
I couldn't remember.
Name, program names, right, yeah, so that is actually, that's been really fun to watch. Olivia Sage has grown our number of screenings as the early childhood director for our program, for our district. And so we screen three and four-year-olds primarily, because we want to do early, as early identification of any, any special needs that come up for those children. And oftentimes, if we're able to identify that early, we can mitigate things as earlier as students get into kindergarten and beyond. So yeah, that 150, even during COVID, we've been able to do screenings. I think several districts have not been able to continue their screening programs. So Olivia figured out a way.
their screening programs. So Olivia figured out a way.
So I'm curious, do you market, is there a way to market schools as an option during those visits?
Oh, absolutely. We have little onesies. We have T-shirts that says Faribault Falcons. Yeah, we do a lot of marketing. Thank you for asking that question. Yes. Little goody bag.
Anyone else have any questions, whatever?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Anne Marie, for that presentation and whatnot. You know, obviously, these budget reductions are really, really tough. And budget reductions typically aren't going to get us additional students and whatnot. But these great stories and these great programs, and how we communicate them to the public and the community, they make a difference. And so, Matt, you do a wonderful job. And since you've been here, our communication efforts and our engagement with our community has gone up dramatically. Misty's still on this meeting. Misty, just a thank you to you and the coverage that the Daily News does. And I would just encourage Superintendent Susskar and your team to continue to push this stuff out to the community. If we don't tell them about it, the vast majority will never know about it. And so the more great stories and the great successes and the difference that we're making in the lives of these students and of the families, please continue to share them as much as possible.
Yeah, thank, thank you. And Matt just did one, did another Animoto for athletics and activities. So that'll be coming out soon. Yeah, so thank you.
Anything else, board members, for Dr. Leland? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sorry I was late. Distracted on the break.
I thought Mr. Denner was going to have to give you a pass or something. Come into class. We'll move on to five G. Mr. Denner, the special programs report.
I, I was not aware we were supposed to have a video. I did not prepare anything specific for that.
Bring your guitar.
I should have. Or my puppets. I do, I'm multi-talented. So every year, I come in front of the school board to present our December 1st child count. In special education, we use our December 1st child count to take a snapshot of what the special ed program looks like in a district, understanding that on any given day, we could have students come and go and move all about. But we take December 1st every year for the, for, since 1974, so we can track data over time to see how many students we've increased or decreased, and where they're increasing and decreasing. And so I've included in the board packet, I believe, four different pages of charts and graphs. And I'm just going to take a few minutes to go through those. And then certainly, you can stop and, and interrupt and ask questions if, if needed. So the first table illustrates our overall December 1st child count over the course of the last seven years. So it goes back to 2017. I could go back further. I, I think seven, seven years is a good, a good snapshot to kind of get a trend of where we're going. Our overall child count, which is all the students that, whose parents reside in the Faribault School District area or residence zone, and have been identified with disabilities, is 728. Of those 728 students, we serve 603 of those students in our building. For the most part, our numbers have remained fairly consistent in special education. We've roughly hovered around 600, give or take five or six students for the last five to six years. Even when the numbers were higher back in 2013, 14, and 15, that was when we owned the, the Setting For program, the old Crick Building. And we counted those students as our own, as serving them ourselves. Now, those 30 or so students are actually served by another district, so they were subtracted. That's why we have that big dip from 620 to 601. But we've remained relatively